All right. We're gonna call the meeting. No, we're not. Yeah, we are gonna call the meeting. I just realized, Mrs. McNair isn't. We're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:04. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. It's also accessible via Zoom and therefore the town is recording the meeting via Zoom.
The host would like you to unmute your microphones. You can press star six to unmute.
If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
You are unmuted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first order of business is public comment. Do we have anyone here in person or joining us remotely that wishes to speak in public comment? Sure, please step to the podium if you can.
No, I'm not in this.
No, okay, all right.
I just don't know if you want me to close this.
Excuse?
We're not here yet.
No, I know. I thought she was coming to speak in public comment. Okay. Do we have anyone, Mr. Gilberto?
I don't see anybody. I'm gonna check the Zoom, Madam Chair.
Okay. All set? All right. I don't see anyone coming forward either. So we'll move on to board member reports. Mr. O'Leary.
Just Hillview, the commission has been talking with two different parties in relation to potential use for the facility. Ongoing discussions with both parties at this particular point in time. The board is well aware. It's been a challenge to operate function hall there, and we've had two prior vendors who have expressed a lack of interest and desire actually closed down the hall. So they're working diligently, working with two different parties at this particular point in time, hoping to have something to offer the administrator at some point, enter into some sort of license agreement with somebody in a hopefully not-too-distant future. Obviously, the goal is to have someone in the facility, fall golf season, help service the ball lines and the ballers. It's been a challenge. This has played itself as a challenge, but just business in itself has been very challenging. So they're actively engaged. The subcommittee, the commissioners discussed it at length the last couple of meetings. So we hope to have something to report back in short order. Water health, obviously, very active still. And just today's numbers, the last three days, almost 11,200 cases across Massachusetts over three days. Members are climbing and going up. They're monitoring it. I have not had an opportunity. I put a call in today, but I didn't get a call back as to where our members are right now over the last two weeks, but it's been obviously a spike, just like everywhere else across the Commonwealth. So people just need to understand that while we have a new variant out there, that it may be here, one, two cases identified. It's still a Delta variant that's having a significant impact. We've just got off the Thanksgiving holiday, lots of gathering. The numbers are indicative, as you can see, almost, we're gonna have two weeks out, over 11,000 cases in three days. So everybody should be cautious, protect one another, wear your masks. Whether anything else is coming down the road, obviously, the governor has indicated nothing at this particular point in time. We're gonna continue to monitor it. What a hell save thing. They're in constant consultation with the state's private public health. The water wastewater subcommittee, we have Mr. Parisi, and again, he can do a far better than I, just let him give the board a quick update as to what he sent out, the request for proposals and the timelines associated. Joe, if you would.
Sure. So just.
You want us to just set up? I'm sorry. Sorry, you could just come up.
Yeah, just up to the mic. But this is significant as far as what's happening right now.
Yes, so about a little stroke, I'll send out a request for proposals on the proposed municipal wastewater system and to do a assessment, a study of the system, what it would bring as far as new growth to the town and also what the financial aspects of the cost of the project and what the event make issuance would be for it. So all of that information is something that we hope to get compiled and use at town meeting, either maybe both this June and again in October.
And where can that request be found?
So it can be emailed through me by contacting me at jparisi@northridgingma.gov, and I'll send that electronically to anybody who's looking for a proposal.
But it's also.
And the proposal is due back December 20th, I believe. So any proposer, you know, must have, you know, a document sent in by that date by 3:00 p.m. And also, there is a pre-bid meeting tomorrow at 10:00 o'clock in this room for anybody that has questions that have proposed. They'll be in this room tomorrow, basically asking them, and I'll provide an answer to their questions within a day or two.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Does anyone have any questions while Mr. Parisi's? We're gonna have you right back. Does anyone have any questions? All set? Good. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Parisi. All set?
All set, thank you.
Mr. Wallner.
Yeah, just briefly, the Forest Committee, we've been trying to work on making the Swan Pond more accessible. It's been really hard to find consultants who can help us look at that in the big picture mode and try to professionalize it, make it more accessible. We finally found someone this last week down in Sandwich, Massachusetts, and they're gonna come up on Friday and do a walk around to give us a first look on doing that. Of course, I would have to go out to bid for someone to find it, but finding a consultant to do that work is just not accessible. It has not been, we have not been able to find them. And the goal is to make Swan Pond accessible to all the community and do it in a professional way that hasn't been done before. So that's what's going on with the Forest Committee. With the age-friendly, I was on vacation and I've been taking, I have my own work job to take care of as well, but as I mentioned last time, the board has been very supportive of making progress towards the age-friendly. We're already taking some steps. My goal is by our strategic meeting in January is to have another set of complete plans so that we can continue to make progress. And meanwhile, people have been contacting me, asking to see the video on NORCAM, so I've been sending out links, and it's been a nice steady stream of people who've been asking for it. So Phil, I gotta talk to you about how we find that on the face, because I sent somebody there and they couldn't find it. So anyways, we worked that out. And then one other thing, whoever put up the menorah on the common, thanks for doing that. About 25, 30 people showed up on Saturday for just kind of an informal get together, and it was nice to have them on the common. Lights weren't on, so I just went and pressed the GF5 button, and it turned on, and we were all good. So it was like 25 people showed up. I think it'll probably be in the paper, but it was great, however that got arranged. I don't know how that happened.
DBW.
Great, great job. That was very much appreciated. People really appreciate. They had donuts and hot chocolate and things like that. It was really, it's the first time it's ever happened. So thanks for making, you know, another first in the town. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Studo.
Go Patriots!
Mrs. Gonzalez.
I'm good for tonight. Thank you.
All right, then. And I am as well. So we're gonna move on to our next order of business, which is to review the report on the four intersections. So, how are you? If we can have everyone who's gonna speak on this come up to microphones and just state your name for the records purposes. And we have a, we obviously have a public information presentation.
Madam Chair, do you?
Mr. Gilberto.
For the board members. So we're gonna go through a PowerPoint presentation here. It's the same presentation that is actually in your meeting packet as well for board members who wanna follow along there. It's page 19 of your packet. Excuse me, 17.
I'm sorry.
I'm the primary presenter. I'm the Madam Chair, so.
Just one second, 'cause I wanna, is there a microphone over there?
Yeah, I feel like it's on the table.
Is that, can you, are you able to? Is there one up at the podium? Mr. Gilberto?
That one is to pick up the podium.
I just think, 'cause it's hard to hear with the phone, so. And we may have people joining us virtually too, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. My name is Liz Oldman. I'm the Director of Transportation Planning for TDC. We were retained by the town to do some safety and operations analysis at four intersections of interest throughout the town. We were hired to evaluate the existing challenges and opportunities and provide recommendations for four intersection locations. April and Chestnut, Park Street and Central Street, Central Street and North Street, and Park, Concord, and Southwood Road. These were decided by number of crashes, public concerns that were recorded, safety concerns, operational concerns, and so these four intersections bubbled up to be studied. So for all intersections, the data that was collected included items on the slide, existing geometry, site distance from the side street approaches and along the main line, existing speed regulations filed with Mastot, vehicle and pedestrian volumes, operational observations, and crash history from the North Riding Police Department. The analysis performed for each intersection included left turn lane warrants, always stop warrants, traffic signal warrants, and those, those in particular are not just the volume warrants, but we look at the intersection holistically to make sure that we understand where it's best to put an always stop or a traffic signal. We also look at capacity of the intersection, how it's operating, and queue lengths. Is there any questions on our process so far?
If anybody have any questions?
No.
Not so far.
The first intersection is April Street and Chestnut Street. I'm sure you're familiar. Chestnut Street is stopped on the two approaches, and April Street is the main line and is a free-flowing roadway through the intersection. Today's challenges include offset alignment, restricted site distances to the south on both sides of Chestnut Street. Visibly, the flasher is a little restricted on, from both approaches of Chestnut Street, and there are extensive vehicle delays. All of these combined to make this intersection a high-crash location. This is one of, I think it's the only high-crash location designated in the town. There are 32 crashes in five years. It's designated by the planning organization. These crashes are all, 91% are angled crashes, which are people coming out of Chestnut Street and getting hit by vehicles, through vehicles on April Street. If you're not familiar with the intersection, here's a couple of shots. I could go through them all, but I feel like I wanna be respectful of your time. So a traffic signal volume warrant is met at this intersection, and that is our ultimate recommendation in this location. In accordance with modifying curb lines to separate and tee up the approaches, remove median islands that are really not necessary and are confusing, the signal will enable us to formalize pedestrian crossings. This is one of the locations that had some pedestrians during the hours that we took counts. Not a lot, but there was a fair number. So formalizing that crossing and, yeah, the intersection will greatly improve in operations. The side street approaches will come off of a level of Service F, and it will mitigate the angle crashes.
Liz, may I just stop to get to see if any of the members have any, okay, questions by the members? None? Mr. O'Leary?
So you are suggesting putting in full signalization?
Correct.
And it's not just a time thing, it's all day long?
All day long. It meets the eight-hour vehicle warrants at this intersection, which is what the Mastot is like the primary recommended warrant. So this would be a full-time traffic signal.
And I did see something in the report about New Street. You're also suggesting a change in maybe a one-way directional there in relation to people traveling northbound on North Street not being able to take New Street to cut Chestnut?
We did look into that, and we decided ultimately that rerouting the trucks into, through this intersection is probably not our best suggestion. So we're keeping the, I just wanted to make, in the report, we went through that analysis of making it a one-way kind of circulation around the triangle, but ultimately, we decided that the trucks, there's a lot, a significant number of trucks that come southbound that make that right turn. I didn't want to, and then they come back up and make the left onto New. I don't want to bring them through this intersection, which is already of concern.
There were suggestions years ago of restricting New Street and Chestnut Street, other than, you know, we have Moynihan Lumber there in our own DBW yard, you know, but there was strong suggestions where to reroute most everybody else all the way down to the center of town and make them take a left on 62 to get them off of that residential area and that straightaway with the heavy traffic and heavy trucks going through there. Any consideration?
No, I did not look at the redistributing the truck traffic, but the concern with this intersection was really the site distances, and so adding a new traffic signal here will improve the safety of the Chestnut Street approach coming from the west and allow people to make that left turn a little more easily than trying to push them down to the point of the triangle.
Can I just ask a general question, Madam Chair, through you? As far as April Street, Route 62, and even Chestnut Street, how much authority does the local board have of police department in establishing restrictions, speed limits, and all the rest, and how much of it is county or state-driven?
Speed limits are on file with, regulatory speed limits are on file with Mastot. So in order to install, institute a new speed limit or change an existing speed limit, you have to perform an engineering study by Mastot's regulations and then apply to the state. And then this board would then accept that new regulation, and then Mastot would accept it as well. And that's how you get the formal speed regulations. Everything else is statutory, like in the background. I think we settled it's 30 miles an hour. Everywhere else is 40 miles an hour. That's just the governing speed limit. So the Mastot still requires an 85th percentile speed. So if your vehicle, if your posted speed limit is 35, and most people are going 35 to 38 miles an hour, Mastot won't allow you to just drop that speed limit. So you have more authority on operations and geometric improvements really than stop, than speed limits.
But again, as far as traffic restrictions, specifically truck restrictions, are any of these roads governed by MASTDOT as opposed to us?
Well, truck restrictions are also governed by Mastot, to be official. I mean, that if you put up a truck restriction sign and there's no restriction filed with the state, then you can't really, then you have no way to enforce it if trucks were to go down there. So I did not specifically look at truck restrictions on April Street, so.
I'm not so much concerned with April Street as I am with, you know, New and Chestnut, but.
All right, so, but that wasn't really the focus of this study, but I think in terms of your question, it seemed like you were saying, do we, we're allowed to put the traffic signal in, even though this isn't, that seemed to be where I thought you were directing your inquiry, not on different other streets. But, so because this is a recommendation and because the, the study appears to have gone through, you know, all the points of consideration and how many accidents and things like that, that should be sufficient evidence to any state agency really that we have to go to for permission to do this, if we even need to, to be able to put these, to make these modifications, right?
You do not need state permission to put in this traffic signal.
Thank you. That's great.
Having the, having the warrants on the road and all the engineering study gives you all the backup that you would need.
I think the thing you're talking about might require a different type of study, even just, just where are you gonna reroute the, that's a main, that's a main thruway through the.
Part of the preliminary report included New Street. That's why I didn't see it addressed here, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, we have another question from Mrs. Gonzalez.
Hi. Where exactly would that signal go? Is it gonna be facing Chestnut or is it gonna be April?
It would, it would control all four legs of the intersection, so, you know.
Because it doesn't go straight across, you know?
Exactly.
So how is that gonna work?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So they would be a split-phase traffic signal. So we have three-phase signal. April Street would go, then April Street would go red, and then eastbound, eastbound would go, and then that would turn red, and then westbound would go.
Okay.
So it would be a three-phase signal.
Okay, thank you.
Kinda like it where Heavenly Donut is.
Okay, yeah.
That kind of a thing. All right. Miss, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wallner.
Just the color coding, what is the difference between the green, what is the green and dark green versus faded out yellow? What is, what is that supposed to signify?
The faded yellow is new sidewalk.
Okay.
And the green is where you would get more green space back. Asphalt would be removed.
Oh, okay. All right. Got you. Thank you.
Did you also calculate how much this is gonna cost?
That was all at the end. I got one big piece of that.
All right. All set for questions? Are we all good moving forward? All right.
We did have an alternative here. This is the only one with a second alternative that doesn't implement the traffic signal. It would just be some minor, some minor adjustments to the side streets and an improvement to the overhead flasher. This is kinda, would be a temporary condition if there was a funding concern for the traffic signal.
Thank you.
So next is Park Street, which is Route 62 in this area, and Central Street. Park Street is a through street. Central Street is stopped, northbound and southbound. So today's challenge is not, well, not as bad as the previous intersection. There is some alignment issues here, restricted site distances to the west. The northbound approach width makes the site distances even worse. While there's somebody waiting to make the left turn, a person can sneak around on their right, which makes it harder for them to see to the right, which makes it harder for them to make their movement. So everybody gets frustrated. The crosswalk is not in the best location for pedestrian visibility. Did have a number of pedestrians crossing this intersection during peak hours, and there are delays on Central Street, both northbound and southbound in the peak hours. So our recommendations in, at this intersection, we did look at multiway stops, but always stop. If we do that, Park Street is a disaster. We get large queues on that road. Because it is the mainline roadway, the volumes are so much higher than Central Street. It's not recommended operationally. The signal warrants are met nominally. So in the COVID condition, they're not met. In the COVID-adjusted condition, they are met. So this is more of a location that I would say, let's watch it and see if the warrants are met consistently in the future. What we are recommending right now is to tighten up the northbound approach while still allowing school buses to get out of there. I know the school bus depot is to the south. But to realign the northbound, southbound alignment as much as we can to make it a smooth movement across the intersection, shift the crosswalk, add some more signage, add a RFB, a flashing warning beacon at the crosswalk to let motorists know that there are pedestrians crossing in that location, and monitor this for future signal. This improvement that we're proposing or recommending is, would not preclude the installation of a traffic signal in the future.
Mr. Studo.
I have a question. Could you have a, could you have a traffic signal that's like, peak hours would be a full, like, you know, you know, red, yellow, green, and then, and it would just be, off-peak would be just like a flash, just because like, depending on where it is, like, for example, during the summer or whenever Ipsus River has a lot going on, it's like, getting on to Park Street from Central, it's like the Thunderdome. Like, I mean, you really gotta, you gotta fight, especially after like a practice. So is there something where that can be automatically, I don't even know who does that or know if it's, like, who adjusts that, but is that something that would make sense?
Normally, we wouldn't do that unless, some places would do a flash in the night hours, like overnight hours, but during the day, you would wanna keep it as a consistent traffic signal operation.
That's what I meant, like, could you do it where during the day, it's a traffic signal like regular, and then at night, it becomes where you don't need it?
Right. Normally, I would say we would just design it to operate consistently all the time.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
So you're not recommending a signal right now?
Not right now.
So I don't understand how it's, what is it, you're gonna do this, I live on that road. I've been watching it for.
Right. I'm just concerned that it doesn't meet the warrants with, in the COVID condition. So I need to have justification to, so if you put in a traffic signal without the warrants being met and without, without a judgment call or backup, and something happens, and they can easily sue the town for a traffic signal that's not backed up by any warrants. So what I would recommend is maybe in a year, looking at this intersection again and seeing if a traffic signal is warranted once we're hopefully out of the COVID condition.
So what is the recommendation you're making?
The recommendation to right now is to, in the short term, narrow up the northbound approach, move the crosswalk, and add some additional signage, add a flashing beacon at the pedestrian crossing, just generally make the intersection as safe as possible, and open up some sightlines by bringing the stop bars farther into the intersection, which will enable us, enable increased sight distances along Park Street, which, which will make the intersection safer in the short term until the traffic signal is formally warranted.
So is that things that you would have to do anyway if you were putting the signal in?
Yes. So this would be like the short term, and then when we work, when we were certain that the warrants were met, we could just pop a traffic signal.
I just wanna see spending money that didn't need to be spent if we're eventually gonna put a signal in, but that is something you'd do anyway before, if you were putting the signal.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Liz, I have a couple of questions. Oh, I'm, Ms., I have a couple of questions. How many accidents have happened here, motor vehicle and pedestrian accidents in the past five years?
This one is about average, with 23 crashes in five years, no pedestrian crashes.
And I, I'm actually not a gambling man, but I would gamble that I'm more worried about us not taking safety precautions here, because the cars fly up the road. No one stops to let anyone out. It's so treacherous if you actually even do stop to allow people to get, get onto Park Street, and people are going to get hit trying to cross over that. So I would say we should be more worried about not doing anything here than just waiting to see. And also, I think that, is your, does your work, does your work piggyback off of the other recommendations? Because it almost would calm the traffic based on your Chestnut Street recommendation. If there's a light there, perhaps that might alleviate some of that, sort of the Park Street barreling down that road.
Right.
You know, 'cause that's really quite close to the next section where people are trying to get in and out. Does your work piggyback off of it, or are you making this recommendation, just looking at this intersection without any of those other considerations? at this intersection without any of those other considerations?
We did look at this intersection kind of in a bubble, except for the fact that we know that there's signalized intersections pretty close on either side on Park Street. So, so I think, you know, additional improvements at Chestnut and Havre might have some positive impact on this intersection. So if you were to install a traffic signal here as well, we would want it coordinated with those two adjacent signals because they are so close. So it makes it just a little more tricky than the Havre and Chestnut, which is a standalone traffic signal.
And I just have one other question on this, and that's the beacon, the beacon, the warning beacon. I, I think I've seen these, I've seen them on Felsway in Medford, if someone's trying to cross across from the bus stop to get across that big huge, they're these big flashing yellow lights across the crosswalk where you have to stop, you have to stop to let the pedestrian by? Is that what you mean by that?
These are, the RFBs that are proposing is near Phillips, like near, 28 near Phillips.
Oh, yes.
So the flashing yellow, and you do have to stop if you're a motorist, but as soon as the pedestrians go, then you can proceed as a motorist. They just alert people to, motorists to that there's a pedestrian looking to cross and potentially crossing in that location.
And you are required to stop?
We are required to stop.
And they'd be on both sides? There's also a lot of bicyclists that try to cross, come across, and it's so dangerous there, it's just an accident, another accident.
I mean, this is so close, I mean, the adjusted volume, like I said, but we, when we took the counts, it was in the, it was in the spring, so we had to adjust the counts up quite a bit. That's why I'd rather have like real solid, you know, non-COVID counts from maybe this coming spring or next fall before I recommended the installation of a traffic signal here. So this might be like next year.
But at least we could do these other measures.
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez, I don't know if Mr., Mr. O'Leary had some questions that Mr., we'll go back and get back to you. Mr. O'Leary?
No, again, I also live in this area, so, again, it's at certain times of the day that it's difficult traffic-wise, but, you know, there's a light at Ryers, there's a light at the high school, you know, this is if you're heading westbound, you know, and then there's a light at Freedom and Winter and Park.
Right.
You know, so there's already three lights in what, about a mile stretch?
Right.
About a mile stretch. You know, so the, so the warrants and the traffic count isn't going to change much because from Ryers, which is Havre Street, down to Freedom and Winter and Park, it's going to be pretty much the same unless someone's going up Central or down Central, one or the other, but pretty much the same. So those warrants are going to be whatever they are. So they aren't going to change significantly, I wouldn't think. And again, coming in the other direction, you have it at Kitty's, you have it at Park and 28, down by Cotus Funeral Home, and then you've got it at Park and Winter Street. So we have a lot of signalization going on affecting the traffic flow at this intersection. I mean, what I found over the, of the years, again, it's certain times of the day where, you know, it can be backed up from the high school, almost all the way back to Central Street. I live off of Oakdale Road, which is the next one up, heading towards the high school eastbound. So, you know, I experience the same traffic flow trying to get in and out of the street. At certain times of the day, it's, it's, it's hectic, and again, the backup. Now, what you're suggesting here on Central Street is if you're heading northbound on Central, coming from Ipsus River Park area, you're suggesting narrowing the mouth there so that people can't tuck off to the right and bang a right and head east.
Yes.
You know, so that's going to back up the traffic a little bit more there, but it's also going to calm down the intersection.
Correct.
And then the other way, what are you doing, I mean, the sightlines, looking westbound, when you're at Central Street heading north, looking to the west, there's that rise over there, which is very difficult to see. So if you signalize it, the likelihood of rear-end collisions is probably pretty good unless you lower the road. Yes, no, I don't know, I'm just, I'm looking, I mean, I know the topography, you know?
Well, when we, when we narrow the intersection mouth, it enables us to move the stop bar closer to the through travelway.
Right.
So you get a longer sight distance to the west. And then they're also adding more signage for the eastbound approach, excuse me, so then, and then just narrowing that appro, like I said, it will help the people make the movement across Central Street a little easier rather than kind of having a job.
And again, there's no doubt, there needs to be some sort of signalization for the pedestrian and bicycle traffic, you know, cutting across 62 to get from the north to cross Central Street, or north side of Park Street. I mean, it's, it's treacherous and not enough people stop to allow the pedestrians to go. And so some sort of signalization to, you know, push the button and let them get across safely is paramount in my estimation. But as far as the rest of it, you know, we have a significant amount of signalization on 62 within a one-mile stretch. I just don't see how that's going to, you know, other than allowing someone cutting across Central Street to get in and out easier. There's always, there's always going to be a break in traffic anyway because of the other signalizations, right?
Right. Right. I would have, honestly, looking at the intersections with the two, the two signals are within a half mile of this intersection, a half mile on either side, I would have expected the, a better operation here because of the tuning vehicles. I don't know if those two signals are not coordinated.
Yeah, synchronized.
So we're not looking for, coordinated to kind of provide some gaps for this intersection. If you were to put a traffic signal here, you'd really have to coordinate well, or you're going to wind up stopping at all three of those intersections within a mile of each other.
How do we get the other two to be coordinated better? Because I think, and I see the chief over here nodding his head.
So, it can be done, but the, what we've done with the high school is coordinated basically to the drop-off and pickup times. That's coordinated with Park and Havre Street. It's not coordinated with Park and Freedom. Park and Freedom just runs on its own, and you never have traffic backups there. It's been, you know, really easy flowing, but as you know, the high school, there's a significant traffic problem between the high, well, Central Street and Park and Havre Street from 3:00 to 5:00 every day. So certainly, this would add to it, I think, having a traffic signal there. So, but it's certainly not coordinated. I think one point the selectoral member, Larry, said was the traffic approaching from the west, coming towards the intersection of Park and Havre Street, those are one of our concerns, is the rear-end collisions, especially if there's a traffic trailer coming, because there's not much distance between that, once they can actually see the intersection. I think that, you know, during our discussions, we talked about that, it being a concern that we would have, and other than some engineering on the roadway, there's not much you can do to improve that, other than lowering the speed limit, as you talked about.
And lower the topography, lower the road.
Which is a whole, I mean, Route 62 and the states involved, so, you know, that's, you know, we didn't talk about engineering on the roadway.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary, you all set? Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'm going to go off of this study, just because you just brought something up about the pedestrian walk, and it made me think about Stop and Shop, and I'll, I'll refer to you, chief, about, that would be fantastic thing to have there, if that's, I don't know if that, if we can kind of get that in here.
On 28?
On 28, at the Stop and Shop, and we had a resident, a pedestrian, killed there during COVID, and I think we've had another death there, I believe, before.
Just one, one more, you know, at pedestrian, just, yes, just one.
The other one was up towards, closer to Walmart.
That was not at an intersection.
Yeah, no, that wasn't at an intersection.
But that would be, that pedestrian yellow flashing light thing, I think would be fantastic there.
I believe Mass D O T footed the crosswalk. They redid that after that incident, Mass D O T came out and installed new, a full crosswalk, not the flashing ones.
Oh, nice.
It creates a red light there now.
Oh, okay.
For pedestrians to pass.
All right, thank you.
I'll just add to the discussion that I think that, I think what you just pointed out is paramount here. Even though there are those other traffic lights in place, this is really congested, really dangerous.
It really is.
Really an accident waiting to happen, more accident waiting to happen. So I'd advocate for a signal here.
I would too.
So what, you have to slow down and stop. It's important. I think what's happening is with the, with the traffic passing, breezing by there so quickly is because maybe they, they had to stop at the light, so now they're barreling up to the next light, and that's unfortunate because someone is going to get killed at this intersection. And I hope it's not anyone, you know, anytime soon, but I also live in that area, and I travel at all, all points of the day and evening, and it's always treacherous, always treacherous to cross over from Ipswich, to cross onto from Central. There's not a, there's no easy time, there really is no easy time of day for that. And that's in a car, and that's a heavy, heavy pedestrian and cyclist area as well. There's a lot of kids. There's a lot of kids in this area, so. Mr. Studo?
And I'll just add, like, I'm not, I don't know yet what the right course is, but like, one thing I'll say is that from, you know, the topography coming in from Central, right, there, it is the human condition to misjudge and think you have just enough time to make it across as a car's coming this way, not understanding that if, I mean, it really does come into an acceleration thing, but I see it like, on the way here today, I was just doing 25, which is not that fast, you know, when I was coming back, and a car made this decision, and I'm thinking, like, the driver didn't understand that if I was even going maybe like five miles an hour, I would have hit them because it just, I think people overestimate how quick they can get to the other side, not realizing that there's a million things starting from, not all cars are race cars from darting over. So I'll just add that like, I think, I don't know if the decline coming in from Central is causing, you know, I just, I see more of this because of how the road is. Is that going east to west or?
Central's north-south.
North-south, so going from south, like, if I was, you know, going down this way, I feel like there's more people attempting that this way than the other way. And I don't know if it's because they're looking down in a decline versus an incline, but I don't know if there's something where maybe it's not equal, because I think more of the accidents waiting to happen come from people heading south on that decline than north. So I don't know if we can differentiate that when we make a decision. Does anybody else think that? I, I don't know.
It's hard because of the topography. How, what are we supposed to do, redo the road like that?
No, no, I'm just saying.
You know, flatten it out, I mean, it's almost impossible.
But there is way to do like an advanced signal ahead, like signal red ahead signage or something like that. But we would really want to make sure that we understood the geometry. We did not do survey out here at this point to understand the exact rating or anything like that. So, again, we're recommending this one in a two, kind of a two-step process because Havre and Chestnut is such a high-crash location, we felt that the traffic signal needed to kind of go in there immediately, whereas this one could maybe hold off a little bit.
Is there a potential, excuse me, Madam Chair, just a potential again, to assist with the signalization or synchronization of, what do we call it?
Yeah.
With, with winter and, I know it's further away, a little further away, and I know it's the high school that, that causes at the peak times, you know, a significant amount of traffic, to give the break, you know, to give, to give a coordinated break at Central and Park Street. To me, that would, would assist to go a long way. And again, to, again, I traveled seven days a week, multiple times a day. I've been here my whole life, so, it's a bad intersection, but again, to me, I don't think we need signalization half a mile apart all the way down 62 either. I don't think that's the solution, you know, and I think if we can better coordinate the lights and give people a break, and again, call out that little extra lane to get people to cut under 62 and hold things up a little bit more, you know, that would go a long way. To me, it's the pedestrian crossing and children and pedestrians that's really at risk. I mean, obviously, it's a bad intersection, but I don't want signalization all the way down 62. To me, it just doesn't, we can do a better job with what we have to make it work better, but how do we do that?
And we can, we can look at the signalization on either side. When we look at, when we do the geometric changes here, we can say, all right, let's look at the two adjacent signals, and how can we improve the gapping at this intersection?
Can you do it from a timing standpoint? Because again, it's at the peaks, when the, when the schools are coming and going, that it has the most amount of impact here in this intersection, and it, with no coordination from Winter Street, there's just a free run, happenstance of when the light changes and it flows through.
Well, school peaks are hard because it's such a short amount of time.
Right.
Right, so you're going to, a school peak is going to be terrible for a half an hour or 45 minutes or whatever, but then it clears out, and then you kind of want this intersection and the signalization coordination to function all the rest of the time.
Right, but again, and again, even at peak, peak, you know, rush hour, you know, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock.
Right.
That's another timeframe there that's, that's critical at this intersection, where there isn't the coordination between the signals a half a mile apart, and you can't get, can't get across, you know, or you can't get out. So it's, it's, so it's not just the schools, so I misspoke. It is, you know, at the peak rush hours, you know, in the morning, and then late afternoon, where we experience the biggest problems here. And again, without the coordination of the lights, I think it could be assisted.
Okay, let's just let Chief, Chief Murphy answer, if he can maybe add some contribution to that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the high school, Route 62 has priorities after school's out of session. So the only time the light, the signal is if somebody came up to the stop line from the high school, that would be the only time it would actually change. As far as Winter and Freedom go, the problem with that intersection is I think the flow from Park Street and Winter Street is pretty even, so I wouldn't know which one to, to slow down because I think they're both going to provide the same amount of traffic. So that would be a tricky one. But that one, I believe, is further away from the intersection, and a lot of people would take a right to it on Chestnut Street, so we're losing a lot of that traffic there too. I guess the, the concern is more the traffic trailers coming on Route 62, heading towards North, and being able to stop at 35 miles an hour from Alders Gate to there. They should be able to, we'd have to actually, you know, measure the intersection based upon the speed. They should be able to, but driver errors, obviously, a quick concern about. Just one comment about trying to get across the intersection. A lot of what we've seen during our investigation is the panic, people going into the intersection and either stopping or panicking and making the wrong turn. We've had several crashes into the home that's across the intersection. It was driver error, but it, it was more of a driver error after they panicked because they didn't know where to go or to stop. They went to go, they see a car coming, and then they just panic and, you know, and hit the gas or hit the brake, and that's where the accidents occur. So I think at least improving by pushing the stop line ahead a little bit and narrowing it is going to help, but I think we'd like to see signal lights there too as at least a problem, because I think it's the safest. But we, you know, our biggest intersection for accidents is Park Main Street, which has signal lights. So that's, you know, we have a majority of our accidents there, so, you know, I don't know that it's going to be the, you know, the end-all-be-all, but certainly without.
Definitely a call to action, that even drivers panicking at that intersection, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be, so it's a call.
Yeah, I mean, this is why we're all here.
It's a call for action, yeah. Okay, I know we have, it's a game of chicken. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Warner.
Just a very quick.
I'm sorry, Mr. Warner.
We haven't talked about, like, if you're saying, what I think I heard the chief say is that there's, you know, there's speed coming from Park Street from Main from here, you know, they have those divots in the road that like, you know, cause vibration on your car, certainly wakes you up. It does every time I hit one. Could we do that even just intermittently to slow that down so people are, and I know everybody will hit it, but if you're not familiar with it, it would wake you up that something's coming up?
You could, they're loud, so I don't know what the, what the resident population is on that south, on that side of the road, I'd have to take a look, but you'd have to really, especially tractor trailers going on.
Yeah, yeah.
They're very loud. So for adjacent residents. So for adjacent residents, you'd really want to get their buy-in on that. We are suggesting to clear a little bit more of that southwest corner to give a little bit more sight distance along there as well within the right of way. So that will help as well in the short term.
Thank you. I know you have a few more, right?
I have two more I'll try.
No, it's great. It's a good dialogue. It's something we've been waiting to discuss for a long time, so.
So the third is Central and North. Again, Central Street is stop condition and North Street is the through street. The major concern at this intersection is the crest hill immediately to the west of the intersection, which significantly restricts sight lines to the west. The intersection alignment is just slightly offset, but not a lot. There is a crosswalk there for the sidewalk on the north side of North Street. And then the wide intersection of Uly Park and Poultry Farm Road, just as you're coming over that crest going eastbound, there's this wide open road, people just come down and start going much faster after they hit the crest. They don't even look at Central Street, they just see this big open intersection in the front of them. So this is, that's one of the challenges of this intersection. The safety improvements that we are recommending here.
Talk about a panic intersection, yeah, especially if you're walking.
Right. I don't know why the thing is still there. So we.
Especially in the winter. The winter too.
I'm sorry.
We're just saying wintertime and, you know, ice and snow and everything.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry about that. We apologize.
The multi-way stop volume warrants and the traffic signal volume warrants are not met here. And really, I would not recommend a traffic signal or an always stop here because of that crest intersection. It really restricts the sight distance even more than down at Park Street. And there's not enough distance for somebody coming over that crest to stop behind somebody who's trying to stop with the stoplight or stopped at an always stop. I would really be very concerned to any, either of those things at this intersection without a significant realignment of North Street to the west of this intersection. So what we are recommending is better or updated ADA ramps on the north approach, bringing the stop bars and stop signs in towards the travelway on the north and south approach, and adding flasher to the warning signage to make that notification that there is an intersection coming up more abrupt, or not abrupt, more noticeable for the vehicles coming eastbound. Update the flasher at the intersection with LED lights. And then really reconfigure the Uly Park Road, Poultry Farm Road intersection to narrow that roadway down and calm traffic speeds. The narrower roadway will make, will definitely reduce the roadway visually and make people not think that they can just speed through that location because it's so wide. I think it'll help in both directions approaching the intersection. Yeah, so any questions here?
I have a question. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I think that you, with this, you kind of nailed it. I think that you've taken care of a lot of the problems because I come out of Central quite a bit. I use that intersection a lot. And that corner, you almost have to, almost go out to the road to be able to see to your right. And then people are trying to turn and you're out in the road. I mean, even if you're stopped, it's just such an issue. And I think you're correct with that. Why? Because not only do they think, if they don't know the area, that they can speed up and then there's this sharp corner that comes up. So, you know, one of the things I noticed coming from 28 to Central, if there's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see any speed limit signs until you get up almost to the moose. There's no speed limit signs from 28 to that point, like Hillview.
On Central or on north?
On north.
On north.
Coming up to Central. I don't know if you noticed that, but.
There.
Like I said, I travel a lot.
There is a speed, there are speed regulations on North Street. It has a 30 mile an hour speed limit.
Right, but you don't see that signage until you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr., Ms. Gonzalez, you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Studo?
I just want to say though, the issue is again, the topography, which you can't do anything.
Right.
When you're going downhill, it's really easy to start hitting 40. And sometimes like you look down and you're like, oh my God, I'm doing 45. Like, it's like not somebody trying to like gun it, but like after the Hillview, right, there's that big drop, it's like a black diamond on a ski hill and it's like, you know, I mean, in New Hampshire, there'd be a speed trap, but here in Mass, we're a little bit nicer. And you just have to try to be more, but I don't think, you know, what, maybe make your more cognizant, you're saying, if there was more of like more signs saying you're going to pass.
Well, especially you're saying that something flashing, so not just a sign, but something flashing really catching your attention.
Right. On that northbound, on that eastbound approach, as you approach the intersection coming up the hill, there's a, there'll be a flashing sign there before saying, pay attention, there's something coming up.
Because I feel like heading, heading towards Main Street, you have to make an effort to start speeding, right? Because now you have all that downforce. So you're, I mean, if you're gunning it, you know you're going fast. But on the way down is like, where I encountered the issue, is like, you know, I got used to it when I almost like, you know, got hit really bad. So you learn real quick. But now it's like, I could see how easily you're like, oh my God, I have to turn into Central and I'm doing 40, what's going on? And like, so.
Yeah, and if you're walking on that corner, Kate and I were walking over to the Hillview.
We were running.
For the Thanksgiving. Yeah, we were jogging. And I actually pulled her over because I've walked that so many times with my dog. I crossed the street to go and cross because people come down and make that corner, like you said, they're coming down fast. And if you're walking, they're going to take you out.
You can't be seen.
I can't see you.
And it's wide. It's a wide space that's unprotected for pedestrians.
Any other questions or comment on that one? All set?
Okay. The last one was Park and Concord in Southwick. Currently, Concord Street northbound is a stop. Park Street eastbound is a stop. Southwick is a stop. And Park Street westbound is free flowing. The challenge is here, part of the alignment, it's confusing if you are not from this area and are approaching on Concord Street in the dark and all of a sudden, oh, there's a stop sign, hey, I don't, you know, it's unusual and it's hard to, you know, it's hard to navigate if you're not familiar. However, there's, so the intersection alignment, there's a significant amount of trucks that make the Concord Street onto Park Street right turn. There's restricted sight distances on the Park Street eastbound approach, just the way that the intersection is aligned. This is actually the lowest crash location, only 12 crashes in five years, and they were all rear ends, mostly from people like going and then stopping and then somebody thought that the person in front of them had gone and then there was a rear end. There's a lot of driver frustration at this intersection because there are long queues at the peak hours along Concord Street and Park Street. So the, at this intersection, the multi-way stop volume warrants are met. I would not recommend it because Park Street would back up, maybe not to Route 28, but pretty close. There would be like a thousand foot queue if there was a stop sign on Park Street westbound. The traffic signal volume warrants are met. However, I wouldn't recommend them installing a traffic signal in this location with the current geometry. So what have proposed is a first step safety improvement. And what I hope this will do is improve the operations of the intersection, that you won't need a traffic signal. So what we're proposing to do is tee up Park Street eastbound to make a more formal intersection, T-intersection, keep the stop sign on Concord Street, but what, and keep the free flow on westbound Park Street. But that tee up requires people to slow down and physically make the right turn. That will also, I think, help people to realize that they need to turn on their blinker and indicate that they're going to make that turn, which is I think why Park Street eastbound has so much trouble. They don't know if people are going straight, they don't know if they're going to Concord Street, nobody's indicating because they don't feel like they have to. So this would make it feel more like a regular T-intersection where then I think that what it will do is make Park Street and Concord Street work better during the peak hours by making this intersection a little slower, a little more pulled in. It doesn't impede the trucks, adds some more sidewalk and adds some crossing places for pedestrians. They'll have to maintain school bus turning, but that will all be maintained as we get into design. So if this is implemented and it works without signal installation, great. If not, this would not, this would be the geometry that I would recommend to install a traffic signal here.
That would be an interesting change. Can you just tell us the, I'm sorry, the one before this, how many accidents in the one before this, the North Street and Central?
Twenty-three. Five years, and this is 12. So this is actually the lowest.
Questions on this one? Okay, Mr. Walner.
Just, it looks really good. The only concern I have is if you're coming on Park Street and you're coming up to that, it's probably the Caesar fight is part of it. I come into here, if I'm trying to go here, this way, this seems like, I don't know how you get across there.
It's, it would just be like a regular T-intersection, but so, but you'd be able to see the people coming on Park Street westbound better. And as well, the people coming on Concord Street and at that stop location. So it would just be like same as you would turn out of any left turn, just.
It's not so busy there where you think you could get across, okay?
Oh, no, I think, I saw a lot of very good taking turns on the park and, but it's just when you, when nobody can tell what the people going westbound on Park Street are going to do, people hesitate, they're like, I'm not sure, I'm going to go, I'm not going to go. So that's, that's what I'm seeing there. I think with a better definition, it'll work better.
Yeah, and the other thing I've always seen is, I'm coming in Concord here, people just blow through that stop sign all the time. So something has to be kind of emphasized to get them to actually stop there, I guess.
Right. And right now, the stop bar is a little faded, so I mean, we're adding, we suggested some immediate implementation type things to the DPW that they can do off, you know, within the next few weeks or month, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary. If you're not going to say it, I am. Go ahead, Mr. O'Leary.
Just go back again, you know? That configuration that you're suggesting here, you know, heading westbound on Park Street, you know, the only thing I think of is Washington and Elm.
Orchard.
Huh?
By Orchard.
Yeah, By Orchard Drive. It's that silly little island that we have there, you know, that slows people down, you know, slows people down and makes people signal and makes people on Orchard Drive come halfway down the street, but you know, whatever. This is a, this is heavily traveled. I mean, are the warrants here, because busy as the hour on 62 are pretty close?
They're, they're pretty close. They're about the same for the warrants, again.
But I don't, I don't see how this improves the sight line. Again, maybe you'll get a few more people signaling to go Park Street West, maybe you'll get a few more, but which will then add a little more certainty if you're coming from Park Street West and heading east. But now you have to jog around it in order to continue to head east on Park Street. And you're right, people do take turns at Concord and Park, you know, they do stop, say, okay, go ahead, that's very courteous of them. But someone from coming westbound is just flying through anyway, cut them off and the poor people in Southwick are just sitting there being patient. I don't, I don't know if that little jog is part of the solution or not. I guess I haven't, as far as, do we own enough land at that corner where we can actually reconfigure that, that portion of the intersection at Concord and Park Street?
That's all public right away, the whole T.
It drops off a little bit. I pulled a few cars out of there, obviously, when I was in the tow business.
This, that curve on that northeast corner of Park Street, that's, might wind up widening out a little bit more, so it's not quite so much.
Which doesn't solve necessarily what you're looking to solve as far as getting people to signal to continue on to Park Street West, but.
Correct, and slow them down on that movement. So we're not inhibiting their movement, it's just slowing them down a little bit.
Okay, Mr. Studo? I'll just add to that though, I just, this, I'm not bought into this one because if you're on Park, you really, and you're negotiating Park, you have the right of way to go either continue straight down Park or put your blinker on and go onto Concord. And this is disruptive of that, that's really one of the, it seems to be one of the visually easiest, not to say people are driving inappropriately, but visually, that's the easiest thing. And whoever's pulling out of, wait a minute, Park is west to east, right? We're doing west, east.
Pulling out of east.
Whoever's traveling east along Park has to just wait. Whoever's traveling east from Concord has to wait. So visually, you're really, this, at least this recommendation to me doesn't make a lot of sense in terms of making that little cutout.
It would appear that you're making the right of way onto Concord Street rather than Park Street straight across, straight through. But right now, it's, you know, you have the right of way, as the chair said, you know, to go straight Park Street.
Right.
You know, and if I'm going Concord Street, I put my left signal on to let them know I'm going. But if I'm going Park Street, I don't use my signal, I'm just going straight ahead.
Yeah, kind of that, that one, that's the only thing.
Now, this appears to be changing the configuration of the right of way, you know, what route are you taking onto Concord Street?
I think that, I think the problem is though, is that Concord gets so backed up. That's where you have to give more flow. You have to give more flow on Concord. It's not Park that gets backed up, it's Concord.
Oh, I mean, I've heard more from residents, Park Street West residents, frustration at this intersection, trying to get out.
Trying to get out.
Heading eastbound.
Yeah.
You know, Concord Street backs up, that's going to continue to back up. That means people are using the stop sign. That's not a bad thing, you know? The backup on Concord Street is the volume of traffic and people stopping at the stop sign. That's okay, you know, that slows it down and everybody's taking their turn. Most of the frustration that I'm hearing are from people who live from Park Street West heading east in Southwick.
In South.
Trying to go either direction.
In Southwick during school hours, you know, school, you have cool time.
Rush hours.
Rush hours.
It's tough. But, yeah, most of the concern I've heard already is, again, is coming from Park Street West heading east and trying to get out of that intersection or into the intersection to go wherever you're going to go, you know? I think that'd be heading east.
Maybe for this one, it would be to have some signaling that's saying intersection because everybody that lives here knows this one. It's people that are trying to negotiate it that aren't from around here, I think. I might be wrong on that.
I wish Mr. Keller were present tonight because he lives just west of this whole intersection. He's rather vocal.
But the rest of it, I think, with definitely with the construction of the ramps and you are making a recommendation to put more signs and also to put, to keep an eye on it, basically.
Right, right. I wouldn't put in a signal with that current free flow on Park and then the free, you know, the current geometry, I wouldn't put a traffic signal in that. I wouldn't know how. But if, if you were to put a traffic signal in in the future, you'd want an alignment like this, so it was very well defined of who was turning where. And that, it would be slowing people down on Park Street and requiring them to come through the intersection and physically make a right turn as opposed to a thorough movement. So.
What about a signaling such as what is on North and Central with just a blinking yellow light to alert oncoming traffic that, I mean, and I don't, this is, there's a lot of residents here too, but.
Right.
What about something of that nature that could just alert, you know?
Yeah, a flasher could, is not, you don't. Yeah, a flasher could, is not, you don't, you don't need a warrant analysis for a flasher, it's just that you can put it in, in supplement your two-way stop here. It's.
But, excuse me, isn't it just the traffic flow primarily westbound on Park Street that's frustrating for the most part? Heading eastbound from West Park Street, you know, Park Street West, there in, in Southwick trying to cut across. I mean, Conker Street, I think it works okay. Well, Concord Street, and obviously, there's no accidents there, but, but again, it's more frustration, waiting time, people get impatient, and the stop and go again is gonna be a rear-end collision because someone starts to go through and then gets whacked because they put their brake on again. The same thing with like Central Street, same thing, you know, the traffic north-south on Central Street again, is nowhere close to what it is east-west on Park Street as far as the warrants go, right? Just waiting time, it's safety sightlines. This one here is just a little more difficult. I don't think, again, you'll have to create, I don't know what the traffic count is and what the warrants are heading from West Park Street, Park Street West into this intersection.
Right.
It's not a big cut-through for any place. It's the residents that are there, people live in Wilmington, maybe heading eastbound for some reason or another, but other than that, it's.
Having the northbound ride from Concord Street onto Park Street is fairly heavy. So especially.
That's heavy, no, that's heavy, no doubt.
And then the volume on Park Street going in both directions is fairly heavy.
On to Park.
Yeah. I would say the Park Street eastbound is probably the lowest of, well, besides Southwick, which is very low, but Park Street eastbound would be lower than Concord and Park westbound.
I think what he was asking was how many people are coming into that intersection eastbound, eastbound?
I could give you a number, but it would take me a minute.
A lot.
It seems, it seems like, it does, it seems like.
A lot.
It is a lot?
In peak hours, there's a long queue. I mean, it's a rolling queue, like people are, you know, with the, you know, everybody's taking turns, it moves pretty well, but there is a significant queue on Park Street and Concord Street at the stop signs in the peak hours.
All right, I think you're next. We do have to move along because we have a, yes, this was, this is another big important slide for us to get a sense from you of what the cost associated with this.
These are all local design and approval and construction costs, so no Mass Stop process, no, you know, nothing fancy. As far as approval, we take the survey, we do the design, we maybe hold another public meeting, we work with DPW, and that's where we get to with those four intersections. The Haverhill Street, Chestnut Street is eligible for federal funding. However, if you do federal funding, you have to go through Mass Stop to get the federal funding, and that opens you up to bike lanes and sidewalks, and that $600,000 goes to 1.2 million, and it's a much, much bigger, longer approval process and a bigger intersection. That if you use local money, then, then it can be done in a quicker timeframe.
But how much, what's the level of reimbursement? You have to spend 1.2 to get it done to their standards. What's the level of reimbursement?
You would go through the tip project, process, and get, would all be funded by Mass Stop through the federal highway safety improvement project, H-SIP, because it's a high-crash location. But then you have to meet Mass Stop standards for everything, and then, so it takes like five or seven years to get on the process and get that money in. It's just a longer process. Something that we are considering with DPW for Route 28, you know, trying to get on the tip list for that, you know, the length of Route 28. You know, a small intersection design goes from, like I said, a smaller thing to a much larger process. And these are conservative numbers as far as construction goes because things are a little out of control right now, but, you know, I just wanted to be conservative for you.
Does anyone have any other questions on this piece? Mr., okay, Mr., one second, Mr. Gilberto, it looks like Mr. Wallner's about to, I can tell you.
I'm just gonna throw out a, if you can indulge me for a second, could you go back to the very first, the first one of, because I think what everybody's pretty uncomfortable about is, we don't really feel like we've addressed Park Street and Central, right? But there's also a cost thing. So you can go back to Haverhill and Chestnut for a second?
All the way back?
Yeah, all the way back, please. Just been kind of bugging me. And I'm sure I'm wrong, but I'm not, not that I'm wrong, this probably doesn't make any sense, but if we were to put our dollars somewhere.
If I were to recommend where your dollars would go, it would be here, just because of the number of crashes and how much you could mitigate, like how much bang you could get for your buck at this intersection, you mitigate crashes, you, you know, improve operations.
Here's gonna be my point, isn't there a, right over here, there's a, there's a road that comes up.
New Street.
Yeah.
What if we blocked all this and this becomes, because the biggest problem is you have, it's just too close together, right? There's not enough time to negotiate. So if you somehow block this and put it down here, you don't need signals here at all. Because then you, and then the reason why I'm saying that is because if we're gonna use local money, then we could put our local money of an intersection into Park, the next one that we seem to be all really uncomfortable about. I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, it's just if we're heading, heading Chestnut Street, east-west to Chestnut Street, so for those people that are traveling up, coming up Chestnut Street, then heading over towards Litfield, PBD, that area, you're having to come down New Street, take a hard left, up and then take a right onto.
But if we could cut that and make that a much more.
Right, you'd have to change that intersection.
And that would give time for everybody to find their way and not run into each other, right? And it's not really that much more out of the way.
I, I, I don't know what the right-of-way is there in order to bring that into kind of a T-intersection, which is what you would need to enable people to look, to look to the left, to make that left. So that's like a, a whole nother geometry camera worms down there, so you want to, want to maybe make sure that there was sufficient right-of-way before we did something like that.
And just be a way for us, I mean, if we're gonna do local money, it might be a more efficient way of moving and be able to solve two problems at the same time. You don't have to have signals here and you, and you put your money in signals where we're all feeling uncomfortable. Just an idea.
I, I understand what you're saying. We have someone that studied it, and I hear so much about studies here that don't get implemented. Even if we implemented these measures, and I understand it's an expenditure, but even if we implemented these recommended safety measures, there's nothing to stop us from modifying it. And some of these, I think, we, if we agreed to implement them, we may have to modify, especially the last one, if we implemented that entire thing. There's nothing to say that now, suddenly, it's, it's, you know, etched in stone that we, we might not need to make a modification. I feel like we, we've paid for this study, we've had someone really looking at it. We really need to start implementing some of these, especially the safety signage and things like that. We need to spend money to do this.
Yes.
It's part of just making it a safer community, especially for cyclists and pedestrians and motorists.
Yeah.
But I would say, what I'm hearing is, we're not sure if we can control the, the traffic on that. I don't know if we're allowed to, that's what I'm hearing, and we would have to research and investigate that. And even this, if we, I mean, I don't know if we're gonna move tonight to approve or what have you. I think this was just to review it, but even this, if we implement this, this, we're not done. Just at that, at this stage, there's a lot of planning and process that has to apply to this. Just feel like we study things, study things, study things, study things, study things, goes on the shelf, we need to do something about these.
I agree with doing something, yeah.
And not, not worry about, we didn't, we didn't, it's not permanent. If it has to change, it has to change down the line, you know?
But if we hadn't thought about doing that, maybe just that was the scope, you know, which you were looking at, it, it seems, you know, the more I've been thinking about it, the more I thought that could potentially be a way to solve that problem without even having to put a signal there.
And we did look at it, you know, I will say briefly, because we were concerned about that site distance and that, the geometry of that intersection to the south. And then again, you would have to make them, you know, all turn right, or all turn left and then turn right. I think during design, things change once you know the, the slope and the geometry and, you know, and the actual right-of-way, then things get tweaked and looked at, I mean, that's something we could look at again, but I know for certain that even if you didn't, even if you moved those people to the south, you still have the people coming westbound. That's had a significant delay in safety coming on the westbound approach, which the signal would continue to mitigate. You probably still want to have something here for those, that approach.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Just an idea. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions. The first is that for a state-funded option, the town would be responsible for the entirety of the design cost?
Correct.
And if I were to increase the estimate, presumably double your estimate, you had it at $65,000, would it be double that for design?
If it's, instead of a two-phase, it's like for, for a local process, it's usually two submissions to the state, it's like, it's five. And then there's a, there's a pre-20, pre-10% scoping, like they've made a process quite extensive at this point. It's probably at, probably three times that.
For design?
For design.
Yeah, only because you indicated the cost was covered, but it's the construction cost that's covered, not the design cost.
Correct. Apologies for that.
Then my second question, Madam Chair, through you, is, do you have any thoughts, and I know we didn't talk about this during our pre-presentation discussions, but is this intersection a candidate for the so-called Mass DOT-type improvements? Are there concerns with regard to the, with the right-of-way?
Um, I, I think it could be a candidate because of the designation. However, like I said, if you bring Mass Stop into it, all of a sudden, we're widening Haverhill Street to provide bike lanes or shared-use path or something, like the design gets different, like it's not a condensed.
I understand.
Thing, so, um, did that answer your question?
It, it, are we talking about, you know, bike lane just in the intersection, or are we not talking about a bike lane that goes up to Park Street, for example?
Yeah, but they might say, take it down to New Street and, you know, include that intersection. They might say, take it over, you know, take the improvements over to Chestnut Street, you know, down Chestnut Street to New Street. They might, you know, just blow out the whole, the whole improvement to, to make it a, a more comprehensive improvement for bicycles and pedestrians, which is what their ultimate goal is.
Excuse me, didn't Redding do something though on Haverhill Street, not too long ago in relation to, you wouldn't notice it, but I think some bike lane, bike lane improvements, they certainly toyed with, playing with the speed limit there and changed their mind rather quickly. But I, but I thought they, they did something with bike lanes, and again, the road isn't wide enough to handle it all, but, but I think they did. So they, again, Mass DOT may just say, take it down to the Redding line to help join up with what the improvements have already taken place in Redding. But are you, you're not aware of what Redding has done, no?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
I would say, I don't believe on Haverhill Street, there's bike lanes past our town line. They did a lot on 28 doing the, and on Haverhill Street, they changed the sign internally and then Mass DOT had looked at it and rolled it, they could have changed the speed limit sign, yes, so they had to backtrack on that piece.
I think there is a bike lane.
There is a.
There's signage, but they didn't, they didn't.
There's no mark.
They didn't mark it out.
Yeah.
They did mark out a rotary over there with all different kinds of paints and lines and dots and things, and that's, that was, that's entertaining to try to get around that thing, but. So any other questions? We're all set. Thank you so much for this, this presentation, it was excellent, so helpful.
Thank you for having me.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, one sec, you might have one more question. Mr. Gilberto.
Well, I was only going to add, Madam Chair, I believe the town engineer has submitted a capital improvement request to the capital improvement planning committee for the amount of money that's been identified. We don't know whether it will be able to be funded in its entirety. I can tell you that there is some additional design work for which we have some funding from the state. And that leads me to first acknowledge Representative Brad Jones and Senator Bruce Tar, who obtained a state budget earmark two fiscal years ago, which paid for this study for us, so it did not cost the town money to do this study. There is a second $50,000 appropriation in this current fiscal year's budget for which we could apply towards design. So we'll work that out through the capital improvement planning process, how that relates to what we have. And the third thing is, I believe there are signs that, if not on order, they've actually been delivered for those very interim improvements to make safety improvements to these intersections, and I know DPW was hoping to install them as soon as this week, although I know the weather may not cooperate now.
Sure, so as part of this study here, we took these recommendations and pulled out as many signs as we could that would help the current situation of the current intersections, and we ordered those signs already, we got those signs delivered, and we're in the process of dig safety in each location, installing holes and then installing the signs in the next, in the next week or two.
Fantastic. That's great.
So regardless of whether decisions are made, this evening, which we were not seeking, we are moving forward with requesting funding and taking interim steps.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you so much for being here and helping out with this. I don't, is there anything else you think?
I think we've, we've meted this out with teams many times on this, but we were able to give our input and we're happy with what was presented today. I too, you know, the intersection of Conker and Park Street wasn't a priority for us, but we understand, there's been some complaints regarding delays in getting onto the roadway, which I can understand, but from a safety perspective, we just don't see that as a major concern. But we support the presentation.
Well, thank you to the team. Thanks for all being here too to, you know, answer questions and thanks for implementing. That's the key to all of this, really. This is a waste if we don't actually implement, so thank you for doing that too. Thank you. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, and we're gonna move on to our next order of business, which is the Common Victualers license application for Nick's Place, 6 Washington Street. And if you could come to the table and identify yourselves.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Mordecai, and we serve safety, I'm a food service consultant, and I am currently helping develop the permitting process and trying to get them open as soon as possible. And I am with the general manager, Mohit Sani, and we're looking for that common license.
And I'm sorry, can you introduce yourself?
My name, good evening everyone, my name is Mohit Sani, I'm the general manager, me and my wife are the owner and.
Okay.
Thank you. Goodbye, Mr.
And your wife is with you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have the application in. Mr. Gilberto, I don't know if there's any other comments, I have it at page 40 to my colleagues. And does anyone have any questions with regard to this? And Mr. Gilberto, let's, let you begin.
Sure, certainly, just to respond to your question, Madam Chair, I did not have it in there, but I have talked with the police department and they have no objection to the license being issued by virtue of their standard review of the candidate. Excuse me, not a candidate, they're not applying for an alcoholic beverage license, and therefore they do not require our civil, civil thing, per thing by law to be implemented. Excuse me, this application coming before you is a long time in the making, I know that there's been multiple months worth of work that have taken place down there, and I think some of you probably have seen the brown paper up on the windows as you guys have gone through the work. I've spoken with the public safety director, my understanding is that the health director has been in communication with folks from Nick's Place and that they will soon be a candidate for final inspection. So while they don't have all of their permitting in place, as is the custom, your vote is subject to all regulatory department approvals, which means that they still need to finalize and get their, most significantly, their food permit from the board of health, but they are in that process and have been for multiple months at this point.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions? None? Mrs. Gonzalez.
So you're the general manager?
Yes.
So who is the, who is gonna be the owner?
So me and my wife, my wife is gonna be the owner.
So you're, you are the owner and the general manager?
My wife is, yes.
Thank you. Have you done this kind of?
Yes, I've been doing since I was 16-year-old, I've been helping my father. I've been helping my father. I started when, in 2007, my father owned a restaurant. I used to, I started from a dishwasher, then the kitchen guy left, fry later guy left, so I, I went through all those positions. Now me and my wife, I want my wife to have the owner in there.
Any other questions? All right.
Just a comment.
Yes, comment.
Wish you nothing but success, you know?
Thank you very much.
It's been a long time reopening and, yeah.
Congratulations on your, I hope your investment pays off and I'm sure the community will support you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. It took us two years just to, I, two years just to get through.
To get to this point, two years.
The last three days since this meeting, I was very worried.
All right.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to grant the common particular license to Nick's Place, 6 Washington Street, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Congratulations and good luck. We look forward to it.
All right. Next order of business is license renewals, which we're grouping together, I believe, the first, the first?
Four.
Four. I will be recusing myself and turning the chair over to Leanne as I have, oh, I'm sorry, I have a hand raised by Mr. Gilberto. Was that wrong?
No, no, I was gonna just, when you finish.
Okay. I ask to be recused from the vote due to family members working in the establishments or having recently worked in the establishments, which I believe are part of the grouping.
Madam Chair, through you, we have 14 pages of license renewal motions that were separately uploaded into the Sheriff file folder for this evening's meeting, as was indicated in the meeting agenda notes. Excuse me. So there, in a separate attachment, you see them, the motions that we should be considering while the chair is present would be those that do not have the number two after them, and the motions that we would consider without the chair would be those that have a number two. And that's to indicate the second version of the same groupings. Does that make sense?
Not at all, but.
It just says the ones that say two here, you can't vote for.
Okay, and then those are the ones, those are the ones you're gonna take up right now, Mr. Studo?
I can, or I can save those for the end, whichever the chair.
Well, I already turned the chair over to Mrs. Gonzalez.
Okay, then.
So she'll have to call for whatever she'd like to do.
Well, let's just keep rolling. I don't know where the, I'm trying to find that other.
I just had to get out and back in and.
Yeah, that's what I did.
I'm trying to exit out.
Upper left-hand corner, I think, if you're the current one.
Well, they were already separated out for the purposes of making the motions.
They are.
Yeah, so.
So I don't need to look at it.
I believe Mr. Studo has in front of him.
I have, I'm ready to go.
All right.
Madam Vice Chair, I move to renew the following common particular all alcohol license to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements for B and R North Reading LLC, D B A Horseshoe Lounge, Dos Lobos LLC, D P A Pottery Ales Brewery and Kitchen.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
By Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Gonzalez is aye, and the chair is recused. Mr. Studo?
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following Sunday entertainment license to expire, Madam Vice Chair, I move to renew the following Sunday entertainment license to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Dos Lobos LLC, D B A Horseshoe Lounge Brewery Kitchen.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Gonzalez is aye, and the chair is recused.
Madam Vice Chair, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Dos Lobos LLC, D P A Pottery Ales Brewery Kitchen.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Vice Chair is aye, and chair is recused.
Question? For this one here, it says the, it'd be the chair of the Board of Select, so it'd be the vice chair. Did you would fill in on this one after?
Sunday Entertainment?
It says Kate, please.
Yes.
But she didn't vote for this.
She's rejected.
She's rejected.
The vice chair says.
The vice chair, okay.
That's the Sunday Entertainment license, Mr. Studo?
Yeah.
Wow. Is that always so?
There's one more, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Studo?
Madam Vice Chair, I move to renew the following common particular licenses to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Starbucks Coffee Number 19845, Dos Lobos LLC, D B A Pottery Ales Brewery Kitchen, B and R North Reading LLC, D B A Horseshoe Lounge.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Gonzalez is aye, and the chair is recused.
You can come back now. That's it, that was the forward.
Okay, I will turn the chair back in.
Okay, next, and our next motions are the approvals of the license renewals for several, which we can vote together on these. Is the motion to approve as a grouping?
Yes.
Okay.
For the list, for each one.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common particular, am I saying that right?
Victular, yes.
Victular?
Victular.
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 English is my second language.
That's another, another yippee, was Clark there?
No, wait, no. All licenses, all alcohol licenses to expire.
Get it right.
December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Young Young Brothers, Inc., D B A Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, Inc., China Cuisine, Inc., Jim's Restaurant Group LLC, D B A Joe's Fish Seafood Restaurant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
My singing got progressively worse today, but I did do 500 years for Sky Realist, so. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common particular licenses to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Dunkin' Donuts.
You are muted.
Thank you.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute. You are unmuted.
Dunkin' Donuts, North Reading Main, LLC, Dunkin' Donuts, Shawna Donuts, Inc., The Hornet's Nest, Captain's Pizza, The Lobster Claw Seafood, Inc., Andrea's House of Pizza, Young Young Brothers, Inc., D B A Ginger Gourmet, Dunkin' Donuts, Holy Donut Seven LLC, Four Pats LLC, D B A Subway of North Reading, Wayama Group LLC, D B A Mario's Restaurant, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, Jim's Restaurant Group LLC, D B A Joe's Fish Seafood Restaurant, China Cuisine, Inc., Molly Store, Inc., D B A Ryer Store, Beyond Bagels, Inc., Papaginos, Wendy's.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Studo, Mr. Studo, on, on one of these that you signed, you signed on Mrs. Gonzalez's signatures, so just re-sign.
Okay.
Or I signed on his.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I signed first, so.
Just re-sign.
I, I own that.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Oh, on two, on three of them.
Well, there's two lines, there's another line.
You need your glasses on. Okay, let's re-sign these ones, okay? So nice and neat for our, our licensees. Okay, I feel like we're at school. Mr. Studo, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common particular wine and malt beverage to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Wayama Group LLC, D B A Mario's Restaurant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
My pen, buddy.
See, I thought he was on there.
Put your glasses down so you can see it. See?
Did I just say it for decoration?
No, see the bottom of it?
Did I just say it for decoration? My second pen, sorry.
All right.
He's on that line.
Thank you.
I mean, he's on both lines, actually.
Thank you very much.
Then he might need the glasses. He needs to re-sign.
I think it might be actually.
He can't see it, and then the college.
Now that's perfect. Sorry, Madam Chair, I have like millions here.
Are you, do we, are we all set with licenses at this point?
No, there's more. I'm just, I'm sorry, I was trying to catch up on the. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class one licenses to expire January 1, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Ryan Ducek, D B A National Sales, Alconian Subaru, Buckhead of Boston, Inc.
You go top or bottom.
And our Motorsports.
Rich, second, Madam.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner.
Madam Chair?
Mr. O'Leary?
The record could show that I will be recusing myself for many discussions and votes that I'm stating in relation to class one and class two auto licenses, as I have a family member who holds a class two, all class one licenses automatically, then class two, so their problem might be just this.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary is recused. Do, do we have any further discussion on the motions? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's four in favor, and Mr. O'Leary is recused.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class two licenses to expire January 1, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Honka Motor Vehicle Sales LLC, Nika, Inc., D B A Blue 28 Motors, Brian Ducek, D B A National Sales, A G A Motors, Inc., P and T Auto Sales, Inc.
Motion by Mr. Studo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gonzalez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that four in favor? And Mr. O'Leary is recused.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class three licenses to expire January 1, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Ryan Ducek, D B A National Sales.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device licenses to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Andrea's House of Pizza, Loyal Order of Moose, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, Papaginos, Kabobunga Entertainment LLC.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following fraternal club all alcohol license to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Loyal Order of Moose.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are we all set with licenses at this?
No, we got, we got more, but I might as well just send these down this way. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following package stores all alcohol license to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements, 211 Lowell Street Corp., D B A East Gate Liquors, Paradise, R2, Inc., D B A New England Beverage and Redemption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following package store wine and malt beverage licenses to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Christopher's Market, R S S Convenience, Inc., D B A Convenience Plus, Joe's Quick Mars, M A, LLC, D B A Speedway of M A, Molly Stores, Inc., D B A Ryer Stores.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following jukebox licenses to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Loyal Order of Moose.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those are that for the licenses that we do appointments, but maybe I just made sure that everybody signed everything.
Yeah. So we're passing these along, but we're going to move on to our next order of business, which are appointments and reappointments.
All right. That sounds, that's, I just need one second, I just wanna make sure. That one's missing and, yes. Stop.
Well, I'll check them after.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think Mrs. McNeil's probably gonna check them out and make sure we signed everything properly, and if we didn't, she's gonna call us back, so.
Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Mary Ann McKay as Town Treasurer for a term to expire on December 31, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Stephanie Kohan as member to the Board of Registers for the term to expire April 1, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Okay, this was a recommendation by the Democratic Town Committee, as required by
Again, this was a recommendation by the Democratic Town Committee, as required by statute, forwarded to the town clerk, and unanimously recommend her appointment.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary, her name again?
Stephanie Kohane.
It's a roll call, name vote. So motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary.
Stephanie Kohane.
Mr. Walner.
Stephanie Kohane.
Mr. Studo.
Stephanie Kohane.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Stephanie Kohane.
And Manu Pelley is Stephanie Kohane. Is that it for our point?
Nope, there's more. Madam Chair, I move to appoint the following individuals to the Mobile Home Rent Control Board for the terms listed below. John Mannion through December 31st, 2022, Larry Brown through December 31st, 2023, Lydia Real Costa through December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary, let's hear from you.
Yes, we actually have, this has been a long dormant board. It was instituted a couple decades ago. Again, mostly oversees the licensing, the two mobile home parks that we have in North Reading. So we've had a recent petition by one of the owners to increase the rent, and part of the requirements are to have a hearing before the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, so we are very fortunate to have these three individuals who will get that forward and fill the void that we have. On the recommendation of the town clerk, so we have to stagger the appointments, because a lot of them is up at the same time. And so, so Mr. Mannion, we're recommending for the one-year term, Mr. Brown for the two-year term, and Ms. Real Costa for the three-year term. But again, we appreciate their willingness to step up and serve, and they called into action rather quickly, so recommend the appointments.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary, on the motion.
John Mannion, Larry Brown, Lydia Real Costa.
Mr. Walner.
John Mannion, Larry Brown, Lydia Real Costa.
Mr. Studo.
John Mannion, Larry Brown, Lydia Real Costa.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
John Mannion, Lydia Brown, and Real Costa.
And Manu Pelley is Mr. Mannion, Mr. Brown, and Ms. Real Costa.
Mobile, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Hillview Commission, it seems like everybody wants to be on this.
Yeah, there were a lot of people.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment appointments of the Hillview Commission for terms to expire on December 31st, 2024. There are two openings. George Stack incumbent, Lou DeFranzo incumbent, Matt Diago, Michael Robert Denobali, Brian Gilbert, Theodore Hagerty, Peter Jackson, Carol Mason, Nicholas Masse, Nick McPherson, Kristen Sullivan, Francis Tonigusso, Thomas Ward.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary.
There's never a shortage of people willing to serve in any position.
That's great.
Which is actually a good thing, but it's, again, I have a lot of, what I've explained to most of these people is that, you know, if you don't get it, doesn't mean someone else beat you up, you know? You only have two vacancies and two positions, and their applications are on file for three years, and, but I will be recommending of George Stack, who's a longtime chair of the Hillview Commission, just that his passion and baby since inception and before, when they had the study committee. So George has dedicated a significant amount of time and energy, up through and including today, when I spoke with him about some other issues that I face in the Hillview Commission, and it's certainly deserving of reappointment. Lou DeFranzo is a resident attorney on the board, has been on for a number of years now, but significantly involved with a lot of actions, and is a member of the subcommittee now trying to fill the building itself, the facility. We couldn't afford his hourly fee if we had to hire him. Tremendous asset in addition to the commission, and I can strongly recommend the reappointment of the two encumbers.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
So Mr. Stack and Mr. DeFranzo.
Mr. Stack, Mr. Studo, okay. Any further discussion? Name, it's a roll call vote, name vote. Mr. O'Leary.
George Stack, Lou DeFranzo.
Mr. Walner.
George Stack, Lou DeFranzo.
Mr. Studo.
George Stack, Lou DeFranzo.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
George Stack, Lou DeFranzo.
And Manu Pelley is Mr. Stack and Mr. DeFranzo.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint David Doucette as member of the Cable Advisory Committee for an indefinite term.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. I know we have two liaisons named to this committee, but is there any debate?
It was a well-handled.
Is there any debate on?
No, David Doucette.
All right.
He's well-known and recommended by.
Okay. On the motion, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Doucette.
Mr. Walner.
David Doucette.
Mr. Studo.
David Doucette.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
David Doucette.
And Manu Pelley is Mr. Doucette.
Madam Chair, I need to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment appointments of the Historical Commission for terms to expire December 31st, 2024. There are two openings. Christopher Hayden incumbent, Les Masterson incumbent, Matthew Page.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Walner, we'll hear from you.
I don't think Matthew Page is supposed to be on this. We haven't talked to him, and I haven't heard word that we're going with him, so I'm good with the first two.
So you're recommending Mr. Hayden and Mr. Masterson?
That is correct.
I think they still have to list them, although.
They still do.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Because we were discussing this today. All right. So it's the two of them?
Yes.
Les Masterson.
But when we have, but Mr. O'Rourke, did he, I know he moved out of town.
He was on Patrick Reverb, you're talking about? He's on the Historic District Commission.
Okay.
That's what I see him on.
This is the historical division.
And he's saying, actually, it sounds like he's going to say no to that, but we're not ready to do that.
Oh, okay. So I don't want Mr. Page by the house.
Oh, really? Okay. All right. Sorry for the confusion.
No, no problem. Okay. Any further discussion? And on the motion, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Hayden, Chris Masterson.
Mr. Walner.
Mr. Masterson, Chris Hayden.
Mr. Studo.
Christopher Hayden, Les Masterson.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Christopher Hayden, Les Masterson.
And Manu Pelley is Mr. Hayden and Mr. Masterson.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment appointments of the Martins Bond Study Committee for terms to expire in December 31st, 2024. One opening, George Cangiano Jr. incumbent.
He's our chair, and he's good. We're happy to have him, and he wants to do it again.
Thank you.
And they've been having success.
Did we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion and second by Mr. Studo, and our liaison is recommending the, Mr.?
Cangiano.
Cangiano, okay. Any further discussion? On the motion, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Cangiano.
Mr. Walner.
Mr. Cangiano.
Mr. Studo.
George Cangiano.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
George Cangiano.
And Manu Pelley is Mr. Cangiano.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment appointment as member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the terms to expire in December 31st, 2024. One opening, Vincent Ragucci incumbent, Rebecca Griffin, Thomas Kaselek.
There's a motion by Mr. Studo, and a second by Mr. O'Leary. We'll hear from you, Mr. Studo.
I'd like to nominate Vincent Ragucci again. He's done a great job, but more importantly, everybody in this board is aware that we have some pretty important things that could hit the DBA at any point on multiple things, but especially the 40 Elm, so I think having a trusted person that is familiar with this process is definitely going to benefit the town.
Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Ragucci.
Mr. Walner.
Mr. Ragucci.
Mr. Studo.
Vincent Ragucci.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Vincent Ragucci.
Manu Pelley is Mr. Ragucci.
That's it.
Our next order of business, okay, so for, there are still, I just have to make a board service announcement. There are still more of these, so if you could reach out to the remaining openings so that we can have this all squared away by next meeting, so that we can get any terms that are about to expire fulfilled. Hopefully, we can reach out, and if you're having trouble, maybe that's an indication that that individual may not be interested in serving, so reach out to either Karen, Mrs. Marlin, or Mr. Gilberto, or some other citizens who checked off the box, or, you know, give me a citizen's active vote. Karen's been really great, and Mrs. McNeil about giving us this information and reminding us to make sure we have these squared away, so. Next order of business, vote to ratify the North Reading Administrative Staff Memorandum of Agreement. Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, thank you. I'll give a brief overview of the pending agreement, which would be for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2021, expiring June 30th, 2024. It's an agreement that includes some reforms within it, including language clarifying the complete agreement or zipper language that's in there, which makes clear the contract is the exclusive statement of the party's rights between the town and the union. I will also note some, some other items that are identified for modification in terms of the language, some language to, excuse me, update the existing discrimination clause, some language to clarify provisions relative to seniority, specifically as it relates to layoffs, and also to clarify the process for promotion, language that would make clear how the, how promotions are determined. I'll also note some modification with regard to the, some positions that are currently identified as eligible for stipends in the agreement to make clear the terms under which those positions are eligible for their stipends, and also the classification under which they are treated within the contract. We've also identified some language that clarifies how we fill vacancies, and specifically how positions are temporarily filled within the unit from one grade to the next. Excuse me. More significantly, I will note that this agreement will end eligibility for end-of-care sick-time buyback for employees hired after ratification, with a couple of identified sections for vacancies, which has actually already been filled since the end of agreement was reached. That's a significant reform within this unit. I think anyone who's with the following knows that we've been slowly but surely reducing the dollar amount for the sick-time buyback within the unit, and we're able to actually eliminate it for so-called new hires. You, for those who don't know, there was an attendance bonus program in here. I think the past two years have taught us that we don't necessarily always want folks coming to work when they're sick, present company excluded. For those who don't know, that's why I'm wearing a mask, because you have a cold, but we've modified that language in there as well, which provided a financial incentive in the form of a time off for staying home, for coming to work when one might have been ill, or for not, for not missing work. There's also some language that clarifies the relationship between the town and the union as it relates to group health insurance, which is a fashion in which we provide insurance to all of our employees. And then finally, I will note the financial terms of the agreement, which call for 3% wage increases in each of the fiscal years, as well as the addition of a step at the top of the existing grid, at the same interval as the existing steps effective July 1st, 2021. I know that was kind of long and interrupted by my coughing, but if you want to provide us a quick summary, as I normally do.
Thank you.
And I believe the motion has been prepared.
Well, I'll call for the motion prior to discussion. Mr. Studo, do you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to ratify the Memorandum of Agreement between the Town of North Reading and the North Reading Administrative Staff for the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Motion by Mr. Studo, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Now discussion. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary.
Madam Chair, I will be voting in opposition to this motion, and it's not to diminish the work of these individuals, certainly deserving of what was negotiated in good faith, and I applaud my, my colleagues who were part of the negotiations, as I expressed, in relation to, from a strategic standpoint, I had some issues with it, to the extent that I find it necessary to vote in opposition. These people are truly deserving of what they're going to get, assuming it's going to be positive. I fully support their efforts and their work and their dedication to the community, and appreciate it very much, but at this particular time, I cannot support the contract.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
I second what he said.
Okay. So that's a ditto from Mr. Studo. Okay. And we're gonna take a vote? Mr. O'Leary?
No.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
No.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Manu Pelley is yes. And I just want to thank the, the members of the team, the bargaining team, and thank the bargaining unit for coming to the table and agreeing to those changes, in particular that, the change with regard to this being the only agreement between the town and the membership, that's appreciated, that's worth its weight in gold. All right. We're moving on to, it's got to be a short report, because it's already 8:10, and you're coughing away, so we need to get you out of here so you can, you know, get some cough drops.
And pick up in seven minutes.
And some rest. But we'll let you talk a little bit, Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, only two items. The first is that we were pleased to be able to open the yard waste drop off center over the weekend, Saturday and Sunday, for residents who may not have completed yard waste pickup. As anyone who's watching the weather may know, we may see some snow this week. If conditions are favorable, we'll look to reopen the center for one last weekend, this upcoming weekend, but we probably will not make a decision until at least Wednesday, when we know what the weather brings in terms of snowfall. But as we ask folks who are interested, just keep an eye out for both our website and for social media, and we'll also blast emails at this termination, should we decide to do so. And we'll also know for anyone who can't make it down to the yard, we have one last yard waste pickup this coming Saturday morning. Items must be bagged or bundled, paper bags only, and out by 6:30 a.m. And then the second item I will note, for those who are following, is Senator Tarrant and Representative Jones have worked hard to identify four earmarks in the American Rescue Plan Act funding that was, that came forward to the state, state giving out both that and some other funding, that I believe is residual from the previous fiscal year, and we are optimistic that when the bill is signed into law, that there will be four earmarks for the Town of North Reading, which we'll review further once they become law. But we're certainly optimistic for that state funding. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions? Old and new business. Mr. O'Leary.
Other than, I want to thank the administration, DBW Director, for addressing the, the need for getting rid of the yard waste for an extra week or two, that a few people inquire. I even took advantage of it myself, so I appreciate that very much. Other than that, also, Madam Chair, thank you.
Mr. Walner?